Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, if you'd like to follow along with tonight's agenda, you'll find the agenda and all the supporting documentation in the little plastic bins right behind Lisa and...
John.
John, sorry. Sorry, John. I'm that way with everybody, so I can barely remember his name.
That would be John, too.
John? Now, I'm gonna be calling everybody John. So you can help yourself to that information, follow us, follow along this evening if you like. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28. This session will be rebroadcast again at noon on Friday. If you want care to watch us on TV, we'll be live video streaming on our website, www.townofyountville.com. Just click on the "Council" button, and you can watch this, this session at your leisure. And while you're in council chambers this evening, we would appreciate it if you would turn off your cellphones and pagers so we can get through this as expeditiously as possible. And with that, I believe we will have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Mayor Sossaman?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Chilton is excused.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, limited, and just for all.
Thank you. Closed session. We had no closed sessions, so there's no reportable action on that. Number five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Move for adoption.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Pose. None, that motion carries. Item six is public comment. If there's anyone here this evening that would like to comment on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, can you please come up? Yes, sir. Mr. Bauer?
Good evening. My name's Joe Bauer, and I live at 6 Foxlove Lane in Yountville. Also, my wife Lori's here, but she's a little camera shy. We're here tonight to make a small donation to the town. I'll just read this. In 2008, as part of the Yountville Day celebration, the Yountville Bocce Club donated the fee for a food booth to sell grilled corn. The booth was built and operated by Joe and Lori Bauer, and the corn was donated by Eric Housley of the Ranch Market. And after the final accounting was complete, the booth made $400. So on behalf of those involved, tonight, we'd like to donate the $400 to the town of Yountville and the recreational department. And in particular, it is our wish that the money be put towards starting a Movies in the Park program. While we admit it is not a large sum of money, we hope it can act as seed money to help develop a program that offers two or three movies in the park each year.
Very good. Thank you.
I just give this to Steve?
Now, you better give it to the clerk.
Okay. Good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks to the Bocce Club. Any other public comment?
I have a comment.
Yes.
My name's Roger Young. I'm the general manager of the Bardassano. And I've come here tonight to apologize. First of all, to the mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council, along with the staff of the town of Yountville. We had a party at our hotel on Saturday night, Halloween. It was a yellow ween event that took place, and things got out of hand, and I wanted to apologize. So to any of the neighbors that are here that had to put up with the noise level, as well as the activities, this will not happen again, and I apologize. And it's really important that we are good neighbors, and we try to do a good job of giving back to the community. Sometimes we not always do a good job, but we put our best foot and best interest ahead to take respect to our neighbors and our community. And so I just wanted to apologize and make it clear that that was unacceptable.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Sounds like we missed a good party. Okay, anyone else? Public comment? Carl?
Yes, I'm Carl Nidka, and I'm here representing also the TAC Committee, and I encourage all the people here tonight and all the people that are listening to get on and ride that shuttle. It just, we need more support on the shuttle, and I'm really encouraging that guy to ring the bell. We'd like him to ring the bell and welcome tourists to our town. We have a beautiful town, and we'd like him to drive slow through our town. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Just for your information, Saturday, he was ringing that bell a lot. Anyone else? Public comment? Any matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move on to item seven, approval of consent calendar. Are there any changes, corrections to the calendar this evening?
I'd like to recuse myself from voting on item 7D.
Anything else? I'll recuse myself from voting on item 7C. Can I have a motion?
I move for the adoption approval of the consent calendar items A, B, C, D, E, and F. And I guess it'd just be John and I, huh?
Well, no. We'll vote on everything. All those in favor?
I'll second it.
Aye.
Yeah. Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. None, that motion carries. Let the record reflect that I will recuse myself from voting on item C, and Councilmember Muller has recused herself from voting on item D. Okay, item eight, presentations. Yountville Days, and we have a follow-up presentation by Lisa Tyler.
The 32nd Annual Yountville Day Celebration was another great success again this year. The weekend's events began with movie night at the Yountville Park on Friday, December the, on Friday, October the 2nd. The Yountville Fire Department cooked up the hamburgers and hot dogs. The travelers served the food, and a large crowd watched Monsters and Aliens under the night sky. On Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce had their second annual chili cook-off. It was a beautiful day with great chili and salsa tasting, and the rock and jalapeno band playing their tunes. On Saturday evening, the Yountville Museum presented Portals to the Past work and play in the Napa Valley. A barbecue chicken dinner and refreshments were served to all who attended. On Sunday, the parade kicked off from the Veterans Home at 11:00 AM with 46 entries. The festival featured entertainment from the Brian Klein Band, many children's activities, a wide variety of food prepared by the local nonprofits, and great raffle prizes. Tonight, the town council recognizes and honors the volunteers for their great support they provided for Yountville Days. We thank you for taking the time to volunteer and participating in this community-wide weekend event. Now, the mayor will present the certificates to all the volunteers.
All right. Will the council join me at the podium? Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay. First presentation, is this mic on? First presentation goes to Mr. Will Anderson. He's here. I don't know if Hannah Eris is here, or Heidi Eris, so we will make sure we get their certificates to them. The next presentation goes to Mary Ann Babcock. We have a few folks that aren't here tonight, but I will mention their names. Dale Bell, Lorena Contreras, Ed Decker, Dick Haynes, Micah Dow, and Sandra Dudley. We'll make sure that they get their certificates. The next certificate is for Ms. Barbara Delinsky. Thanks, Barbara. Did you want to say something?
Not really.
Okay. Have a seat. All righty. And apparently Jill Erickson, Donna Gardner are not here tonight. We'll see to it that they get their certificates. Doris Gentry.
Can I share something? Okay, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm the chair of the Napa Fourth of July Parade, and this year, coming up next year, Napa's Fourth of July Parade, we have the Travis Air Force Base marching band. And they called me today and asked if I knew of any town that would like to have them come and do a concert after they march in our Napa Parade. And I said, "Well, you know, I'm coming to Yountville tonight. I was helping with the Yountville Parade, and maybe Yountville would like to have the band." So I talked to Lisa, I talked to Lisa about it, and we're gonna get together, and they said they would love to come to Yountville and play up at the Yountville Fourth of July Parade. So if Yountville would like to have them, it would be our good fortune to pass that good fortune on to you. So I just wanted to share that to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And is Virginia Goodwin here tonight? No? We'll see to it that she gets her certificate. Susan Himes. Joe Hennessy is not here this evening. Cliff Hill.
Can I say something while she's looking?
Sure.
I just want to say that the town of Yountville is very fortunate to have an employee like Jennifer. Customer service is very important, and Jennifer is always there. She's there with a smile. She's always willing to help, and I just hope people appreciate it the way I do, Jennifer. And thank you, because I enjoy working with you and your staff.
Thank you for those comments, Cliff. Oh, Mr. Hurley, I'm sure he's busy cooking something up across the street. Michael Leahy, Catherine Madden, Kathleen, I'm sorry, Madden, Anita Martinez, Neil Anne Martinez, and Wes McGee. They're not here tonight, so we'll see to it that they get their certificates. Lorraine Miles. Yountville's so lucky to have so many people who care about the community to volunteer their time and efforts for these events. Winnie Murphy is not here this evening. Carl? And Nancy Nidka.
You know me, I like to say a little something. You know, it's awful nice. Over there, Lisa is, we want to thank Lisa. She's done an outstanding job in, in the Sheriff's Department. We really appreciate all the services you've done for helping making our success, our parades a very success. And thank you, Cindy. We enjoy being here and doing work for the town.
Is Jim Patton here? Jessica Pearson and Mary Peiser. We'll see to it that you get your certificates. Steve and Vicki Prezek. I mean, her name's not John, okay. Carol Sherman, is she here? No? Alicia Stockton. We'll see to it that they get their certificates. And Anna Uribe and Steve White. Those are our last two volunteers on the list, and they're not here tonight. We'll see to it that they get their certificates.
No, you're not obligated to stay.
You're not gonna stay for the good part? All right.
May I say something now, please?
Sure.
For each of these 32 years, I have done this job. It's been a pleasure. I've worked with some wonderful, wonderful people. And next year, I'll be having a good time. You're gonna have to find somebody else. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. Well, doggone, I have to start looking for new volunteers. Item nine, public hearing, master development plan amendment. Is there any comment from staff before we move this to, continue this to a new date?
We're asking this be continued to the November 17th meeting because we didn't have the Napa County Landmarks Report on the evaluation of the farmhouse until this week, but we now have it, and we will be ready on that date. But we did want to open the hearing tonight to any members of the public who may have come out since it was notice for tonight's hearing.
And I, we didn't get a copy of the report, did we? The landmarks letter?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, I do have a conflict on this particular issue, so it is gonna be open to public comment. I think I should recuse myself then from the...
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening before we continue it to a date certain? All righty. I'll close the public comment, and, and we will, come on back, Mr. Dutton.
Can we have a motion to continue?
Yeah. We, we need to make a motion and vote on it.
I move that we continue this public hearing to our next scheduled meeting on November 17th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. None, that motion carries. We'll see you on the 17th. Item 10, public hearing, design review Bardassano residence. May we have staff report, please?
Mayor Sossaman, I have a residence within 500 feet, so I'll need to recuse myself.
All right. Let the record reflect. Councilmember Muller is stepping down from the dais.
The item before you is a request by the Bardassanos to build a single-family residence on one of the parcels of the Bardassano complex. And this is a map of the overall Bardassano site, which includes the 62 Unit Inn, the 25 units of affordable housing, and the single-family residence that's located down in the southeast corner there. That master development plan for this project included the, included many side amenities, and included the extension of pedestrian and bike paths to the south and east sides of the residence, a new bridge over Hopper Creek, a passive park at the southwest corner of the project site, a 40-foot deep setback along the property, the Yount Street frontage that's planted with vines, and a 65-foot view corridor along the south property line. The proposal for you, before you tonight, is for a 4,179 square-foot single-family residence. Next slide. And it's shown here, depicted in the corner, and the gray buildings in the upper left-hand corner of the slide show the Bardassano Inn. And we can start flipping through these next slides. They show the design of the residence, beginning with an overhead, moving to some aerial shots, and then showing elevations as you move along. And as you can see, it's been designed to be compatible with the Bardassano Inn and Spa. It uses many of the same design elements, such as the flat roofs, the stone, the siding, the fascia, the different metal elements, and the result is that it seamlessly is integrated into that site. The property is zone planned development, which allows flexibility both in the creation of the lot and the development of that lot. And the proposal for this house is consistent with the town zoning and design ordinances. In relation to the floor area ratio, they are proposing a 37% FAR, and that includes the exemptions for the garage and the energy-efficient mechanical rooms, and it allows a higher 40% FAR bonus because of the 25 affordable housing units that were associated with the overall project and the master development plan. The proposed building height is 14 feet 9 inches, and that's within the allowable 20-foot maximum, and that takes into account, as you can see on this slide, the three-foot retaining wall at this deepest corner. So even when that's figured in, it's below the 20-foot maximum. The proposed setbacks are 20 feet for the front setback, and that's elevation facing Yount Street, which is to the left in this photo, and five-foot side and rear setbacks, and that's to the property line, but the effective setback is greater in that the rear setback is over 35 feet to the center line of Hopper Creek and over 20 feet to the properties to the south of the project. The ZDRB met and reviewed this project on October 13th, and there were several members of the public that were in attendance at that meeting. They raised some concerns. One was that the residence is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods of Toyon Terrace or Heritage Estates, and the ZDRB felt that the design was appropriate because it blended in with the Inn site, which it was adjacent to, and it would be difficult and inappropriate to incorporate designs of those other two residences at this location. Issues with the operation of the Inn were raised at that meeting, but those are not up for discussion tonight, although they do form the basis for many of the neighbors' concerns. One are visual and privacy impacts, and these result from the elevated pad, as was shown earlier, and you can see in this photo that it's on a three-foot retaining wall and elevated pad at the deepest corner, and then it becomes smaller as you proceed north and west. The, and for the building and fence elevations that face the south and east. The ZDRB felt that the landscaping and fencing issues could be mitigated to the neighbors by creating a buffer, and they view this in terms of landscaping in and around certain elevations and consideration of higher landscaping. And staff had proposed conditions two and four in the staff report. Because of some uncertainties with what the, what the fence height would be, what the design would be, and other issues, we're suggesting a revised condition, and you have those at your seat. That is essentially to provide a final landscape and fencing plan for the ZDRB's review and approval, with the intent of providing a buffer and privacy and being consistent with the creek corridor. This will allow the applicants some flexibility in creating that final plan, but ensure that decision-maker approval is given to it. Lighting and noise impacts were other issues raised by neighbors, and we feel these can be mitigated with the photometric condition and the one regarding pumps and motors, and that those be enclosed so that sound doesn't cross a property boundary. Parking was an issue of concern, and we've included a condition that the Inn parking lot, which is adjacent to this project and where those two people are standing, not be used for construction, staging, or parking, so that that parking is available for the Inn. Staff is also suggesting a condition that the residence not be used for vacation rentals of 30 days or less, because the design of the residence matches so seamlessly with the Inn, and if it were sold in the future, we wanted to make that clear, that we would want that. So staff is recommending approval of this project with the conditions that we've suggested, and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Sarah, where are the parking spaces for the site?
This right here is the... Maybe you can use the arrow. I can't get this to work.
This is a gate that opens into a motor courtyard.
Okay. And that's their garage.
And that's a two-car garage, that closest element to the...
Do they have any access to parking outside the perimeter of their residence?
No, that is the Bardassano Inn property. They could accommodate overflow in that motor courtyard, allowing cars to pull in, guests who are visiting, and things of that nature.
Okay.
But not long-term parking is not envisioned there. Just the two parking stalls for the residence itself.
Is the site already graded?
It's mostly graded, yes.
Where, where are they gonna stage the construction?
Be from the public right-of-way in different sections.
Oh, okay.
And on the site. They'll have to move around the site as it's being built.
And this, is this a view from the little bottom part looking eastward? Or wait?
No, this is looking southwestous.
That's the creek, right there?
Creek is here, and then the trail wraps around Ivy Court, Community Center.
So the vegetation that's shown on these, these, these designs are just for design?
Yeah.
I mean, because there's a lot of natural riparian vegetation in that corridor, right? That's not gonna be removed, or, okay. That's all I have. You have any questions for staff? Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No, I don't.
Vice Mayor?
I do, just as it pertains to the screening, the lighting and visual screening that you're discussing, having visited the site, it looks like we have two very different issues, one to the east and one to the... to the east and one to the south. Is there... What you're proposing in this that we were just given is that a plan would be tailored to both the east and south, because there's significantly more mature vegetation to the east.
Right, yes.
But I guess I'm getting at, what assurances do the residents on the other side of, you know, on Ivy Court have of the effectiveness of the screening?
Well, the assurance comes from the fact it needs to go back before ZDRB. The ZDRB has expressed concern that that east elevation and that southeast corner should have more landscape buffer to protect the residence to the east and the one across the creek. The residences to the south, their issues can be dealt with, likely with a fence that is agreed upon.
And then who is responsible for the maintenance of the screening, since it's technically going to be off of the residential property and on... Is that on public property, then?
No, it would be on Bardessano Inn property.
So all the screening would take place before it reaches the pathway, inside the pathway, then, is what we're proposing?
No, the property line goes to the center of the creek, so when we're talking about the creek bank, it's the Bardessano property.
So the pathway is an easement that will exist, and all of that property in that corner will be the Bardessano Residence's responsibility?
Uh, yes.
Let me clarify, you actually have two situations. Depending on the final landscaping plan, a portion of the landscaping will be on the Bardessano Residence site, and their portion of the landscaping will be on the Bardessano Inn site.
I guess rather than debating it here, maybe when we get to the applicant, they can make that clear.
And that's also why we're asking for the landscape plan, so that it can be fully. But the town's easement is for the path only, and the town's responsible for the maintenance of the path, but not the associated landscaping on the balance of the property. So that's why I want to make clear. Some of what staff is talking about will be on what would be considered the Bardessano Inn site. Some, based on the final landscape plan to be developed, will likely be on the Residence site.
And the only other comment I wanted to make was for clarification, because on a couple of these renderings, this one, for example, it almost... It looks like part... The portion of the Inn is shown, and it's not really a portion of the Residence. And just for clarification, for people that might be seeing this for the first time, that not everything that's represented in some of these renderings is the Residence. So there is a differentiation between the Inn and the Residence.
The Inn is shown for perspective, and it's a two-story building that sits behind this proposed one-story building.
Yeah, the Residence is a single-story Residence.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to address some of the concerns of the council?
I'm Steve.
Steve Bardessano. My wife, Pat, and I are the applicants, and we have an interest both in this property as well as the hotel over there that you've been talking about. Before I get on, I want to make sure that you understand that we did not propose any landscaping on the portion of the property that belongs to the hotel site. There's a recommendation that's now been somewhat deleted temporarily in favor of a plan, and that plan may indeed include some things on that site, but it's not something that we had proposed. To your question, John, we're talking about... And by the way, Rob Anglin here is the architect. He'll come up after I'm finished and share some ideas and thoughts with you about the design itself and how it's going to function. But one of the things we've talked about is, and is after that... After we've met with ZDRB, was to take some of those fencing elements that are up on the Bardessano Residence site, tuck those back in a little bit to give more room around the site, to put some of the screening, the plant material, in there so that it'll... It will soften the Residence walls and the Residence fencing. So, you know, that's the scope of what we're working on. I have a... I have a proposal from a landscape architect that we will probably use. We're very happy with the proposal, and I'll tell you, it's the Bertati Landscape folks. They're the people who did the hotel, and we think that they're really, really good, both in terms of their innovation and the quality of their work, and they're really, really good people to work with. So those are the folks we'll probably be working with. What I wanted to do is to... I've asked and asked by so many people, "Why are you doing this back there? Are you sure you want to live there?" And, you know, all the questions. And I told the ZDRB a few things that we set out to do when we developed this property, or thought about developing it. And one of the reasons we want to live on the property, there's always been a Bardessano Residence there that dates way, 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 way back, even before me, and that's way back. So historically, we've had somebody in the family living on the property, and Pat and I were the last family members to live there, and we've always wanted to live in the town, so we want to return. So that's one reason. And the return to that property, we think, would be special. We've also always believed that you should be able to live nearby commercial development, that they should be compatible, and if they're not, you should make them compatible if you can. And so we want to demonstrate that we're game to try to do that. And thirdly, there's a... An affordable housing or an apartment development nearby that. That sometimes raises questions in folks' minds as to whether or not you want to live in a single-family unit nearby that. We think you can and should, and don't see that as a negative. So we wanted to demonstrate that as well. So those are the big reasons that we're coming down there, or want to go back there. As to the staff report, I just have a couple of comments. I talked with the staff a couple of times today, and they've tried very hard to address some of the things that I raised, some of the issues that I raised. But the original recommendations left a lot more questions in my mind about how it happens, the process, and how you make the decisions about what does the fence look like, who picks the contractor, all of that. What's the ultimate cost that you're going to bear? And so I think the idea of stepping back for a minute and taking a second look at that, developing a plan, is a good idea. I had hoped what the staff would propose, though, is that the staff would be the moderators of that. Get the players together, the folks that are in the neighborhood that have an interest in this, including the town, and see if we couldn't come up with something that works for everyone. This... And one of the reasons I feel strongly about that is that... The reason we're talking about that is it is a result of a staff recommendation related to this design review. It's not something that we have initiated, and I don't frankly don't want to be the lead person in that. I'd rather be a player in it, be a participant, of course, but not the lead person. So I would ask that you think about that as a part of the continuation that they're suggesting. We do support continuing that part of it. I was also asked about timing. One of the things we're trying to do to get this thing moving forward is to get the plans for the house itself, the buildings themselves, complete and approved by you all. That will give us at least license to move forward and talk about working drawings and cost and all of that sort of thing. While we're doing that, we could probably engage the landscape architect to come up with a master... A master plan for landscaping and fencing that would address the recommendation that you see from the staff. And part of that, before we can really accomplish that work, I think, is to get together with the parties and see how we want to proceed. So there you are. I'll... I'd like Rob to share some thoughts with you about the architecture, some of the things we've talked about since these plans that you'll see that you've seen tonight have been developed, some of the things that came from ZDRB. And I'm here. If you have some questions, I'll be available.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rob Anglin of Anglin Design here in Yountville, and I'd like to preface my remarks with just a quick comment. It's been a real pleasure for me to help fellow Yountvillians return to Yountville after a period of time when they haven't lived in this town, because by dealing with them on a very intimate basis on designing their house, I've really gotten the feel of what they really... What Yountville really means to them. And so it's a real pleasure for me as an architect to work with a client like that. I think what I'd like to do is maybe start off answering Councilmember Dunbar's question about the property lines and some screening issues, and then I'll talk about some of the design elements. But essentially, what we're proposing before you is the Bardessano Residence, which is... Has its own property lines within the larger context of the Bardessano Inn. So for instance, the... On this drawing to the north side of the pathway, this area along here going to that corner and back up to where the gate coming into the property coming down, and then stepping down here is the Bardessano Residence.
Rob, can you take the microphone with you?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So we can get your comments on the record?
Yes, of course. My point is that this area along here, going north to where the entrance to the auto court is, and then coming south and then stepping back to this line here, is the property line of the Bardessano Residence. The property line of the Bardessano Inn runs along this area here to this point and goes north. This is the center line of the creek right here. So within this area between the property of the Bardessano Residence and the Bardessano Inn is all the amenities that were granted in the initial build-out. So that is sort of the area that we're talking about. The other... The other issue that has become... Talked about quite a bit is privacy, visual privacy. This house, from the very beginning, the Bardessano's Residence, has been designed with a six-foot-high fence around all windows on both the south side and the east side. So it's not an issue about the Bardessanos seeing into any residence around there, because it's a six-foot-high fence that's directly outside of their windows. So there really isn't an issue around that, because the Bardessanos aren't going to see anything. As far as people being able to see the residence, they're not going to be able to see into the residence because of the same screening that exists. So I'm not sure what the issue is around the visual privacy, because there is none as far as I can see. It's been designed from the very beginning with that in mind. The issue of the screening that is in the staff report is talked about in reference to the property line of the Bardessano Inn and the residences along at Vista Court. And that is the discussion about the... Providing the fence that they, I think, have a six-foot-high fence now and extending it to eight feet. Oh, okay, thanks. So that's one of the issues. Let me just tell you, the Bardessano Inn was built with the intention of getting the highest qualification of the LEED, which is Platinum. And in the spirit of that, we are really designing elements into our residence that follow that idea. And one is that we're using solar panels on the roof, we're using high-efficiency mechanical systems, and also in the site drainage from the courtyard, we're using the pavers that the Bardessano Inn used, which actually the water drains between the pavers as opposed to sheeting off. So I think that a lot of the things that were done well in the Bardessano Inn, we're doing with the Bardessano Residence, too. The materials that we're using are similar. The design, as Steph said, is similar to the Inn itself. We've eliminated the split block as a material, and in its place, we're using plaster stucco with an integral color in it. The other materials would be steel and glass and wood, as you see in the Inn itself. Also, the design for the privacy fences that I was talking about earlier is the identical design that's used throughout the Inn, so there'd be a seamless kind of tie into that. Another feature that we proposed was to give a little bit back to the community along the south elevation there where the courtyard is. And that is, we've proposed that we have a two-sided water feature. So the water would bubble out of the top and flow towards the courtyard of the Bardessano Residence, but also flow in the direction towards the south. So people walking by the pathway would have the advantage of this kind of water feature. The... Yes, exactly, that's where it is. And what... In response to some of the comments at the ZDRB meeting, which I thought were very good, we have decided to, instead of having glass block, that we've decided to use a more opaque surface like a stone wall or something like that. The glass block was six feet high, as it's designed right now, but... And the stone or plaster stucco wall would be the same height. But I think that in the spirit of trying to be neighborly to the people in Ivy Court, that we have decided that it would be better to maybe not have that transparency of the glass block, maybe have something that is more opaque. Let's see, what are some of the other things? One, and Steve mentioned this in his comments, the ZDRV brought up the idea that maybe the fences were sitting too close to the site wall, and we were proposing them initially to be sitting on top of the site wall. What we're proposing to do now is to pull them back from the edge of the property so that we'll have a planting strip there, where we'll actually be able to soften the edges, both having things growing up, but also growing down. So the intent is to soften all of the edges that you see in this drawing. The... Let's see, what are some of the other things? There was a question about the pump for the water feature, and I think that there was a comment that was made by the public in terms of the pump for the Bardessano Inn. What we propose to do with the water feature is actually to put the pump in a vault, so it would be in the courtyard side of the Residence. So there won't be any sound associated with that. I think that those are pretty much the larger pictures, and I think that you may have some questions of me, so I would be happy to take any right now.
Okay. Does Council have any questions for the architect? Or Mr. Bardessano? Specific questions? Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No, I just appreciate the clarification on all of those issues, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
You have a question? Vice Mayor has a question?
Sure. Could you explain a little bit about the staging of the construction? That this could be a self-contained site or have just mobility back and forth from Fennell? That's the way it sounds like it's been explained.
Right. Well, it is a tight site, obviously, and I think that we're going to have to be very detailed in how we stage the construction, because as you can see, we have a courtyard that we can be building from, the auto courtyard, and a lot of the work can be done from there, but at various times in the future, you know, that may not be sufficient. And so I think that what we'll have to do is stage off-site, bring and bring the materials on a as-needed basis to accommodate that. You know, just off the top of my head, I would see that that's probably how we'd have to approach it.
Okay. And while I've got you, just one other question to clarify. In terms of the Residence property line is basically the retaining wall.
That's right.
And so now you're proposing where you're showing fencing, that will be moved back a couple feet, two, three, four feet? So there is landscape softening the fenced area, but then the areas where there isn't fencing, it'll just be some level of landscaping?
Exactly, exactly. And I think, you know, I would be confident in dealing with a landscape designer, especially the one that did the Bardessano Inn, to be sensitive to, you know, the plantings that are required there. And I do think that... And I do think that plantings on the platform, now, that platform during the construction of the Bardessono Inn was an engineered platform. So, it's compacted, the walls are in place. So, and in terms of the landscaping that'll occur there, I think that, based on the comments of the ZDRB, that I think that the landscaping will both go down and go up. So, the other thing that we plan to do is the site wall right now for the platform is the split block that you see throughout the inn. And we propose to plaster that over to bring that material more in tune with our residence. So, you'll have vines and material growing down over that, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this plan this evening? Anyone?
I like to compare the architecture of the Bardessono Inn to modern art. It evokes strong opinions, both positive and negative. I have no doubt that the architects had this objective in mind. The design is bold, attracts attention, and is controversial for a purpose. The design is an effective way to draw attention to and to market the green theme of the inn. I'd like to point out that the current placement of the inn is not adjacent to any private homes. I seriously doubt that the inn would have ever been approved with this bold design close to homes in the adjacent neighborhoods. Now, the applicant is requesting that a home that appears to be an extension of the audacious Bardessono architecture be built in a location close to the backyards of at least five existing homes and prominently visible to several more. I don't think that the currently proposed design is appropriate for a home anywhere in Yountville. I'm not talking about whether it should be more like the Craftsman style of the Heritage Estates or like the stucco bungalow style of Toian Terrace. It should look like a house and less like the in-your-face design of a commercial building. I'm especially concerned about the glass brick waterfall, which they decided to change. I'm glad that they made that change. However, the fountain may not be to the neighbors, they may not like the fountain. And this is a perfect example of a nuisance mentioned by Councilman Dutton during a recent discussion regarding the town fence ordinance. He felt that if a homeowner had something he did not want to look at on their neighbor's property, they should be entitled to build a fence tall enough to block it out. The problem for the neighbors is that the building site for the proposed home has been raised four feet above the surrounding properties. The path has been raised one foot and the pad is another 37 inches above the path. For the neighbor directly to the south, the top of his six-foot fence is only 21 inches above the pad, it measured it today. This unfortunate neighbor would need a 12-foot fence to give the same degree of privacy that an eight-foot fence would give if the properties were at the same level. I urge the council to ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board. They've already eliminated the waterfall, the glass brick waterfall, which I'm very pleased with, and design a building that's more appropriate as a residence and respectful of their neighbor's privacy. What I'm talking about is the neighbors having to look at this very tall structure raised up on a pad that would complement the Bardessono Inn design, but not necessarily duplicate it. I fully support the staff recommendation that the Bardessono rear parking lot not be used for construction staging or parking. When the inn was finished, construction materials were stored in the employee parking lot for months after the inn was open for business. Because many parking spaces were no longer available, the employees are forced to park in the surrounding neighborhood. I want to thank the staff for addressing this issue. I also fully support the staff recommendation that any structure built on the site for residential use only and should not be rented out. The site proposed for the residence is very unusual, to say the least, and it seems better suited for commercial use than a residential use. Numerous exemptions are being granted for the proposed structure as a residence that would not be allowed for a commercial building. I don't think that I would want to live there, but it could be a fantastic party facility, executive suite, or meeting complex. I'd like to request that the council include language in their resolution that would not allow the residence to be used for any commercial purpose. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Public comment on this design plan this evening? All righty, seeing no more public comment, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council to discuss and make a decision. Councilmember Dutton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to comment, I appreciate the comments that Mr. Bardessono made on his desire to build this home in Yountville and why. I think any of us who lived here any length of time, I have not very long, but have always known they have had a residence there, actually, a house right in the middle of it. And I wish him well in getting back here, and I think he will. As far as some of the comments he also made about the landscape planning, I certainly admire his willingness to bring in the surrounding area residents. I just hope you can basically attain some level of reasonableness. And I wish he'd probably put a timeframe on it as far as how long you're going to let it go. If you can get it worked out, great. If not, I guess it would have to come back here. I think Mr. Anglin addressed a lot of the issues that were brought up at the ZDRB, and I appreciate that. We heard two comments about the waterfall. I don't know, it seemed like we have a lot of water features in town. Maybe some people don't like them, I would have to say. I think the majority of the people enjoy that type of aspect. But again, if it's in your backyard, well, it remains to be seen on that. Other than that, I really don't have any comments. I think it's a very nice compatibility with the inn. I don't see anything wrong with the design. I think Mr. Anglin has done a very nice job, and I support it fully.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I share my appreciation for Mr. Bardessono and Mr. Anglin addressing upfront some of the concerns that the ZDRB and the council expressed, as well as people that actually live next to this property, that would be the ones that would be truly impacted. So, thank you for addressing those concerns. My biggest problem with the site and the design was the impact on the neighbors, having walked the site and seen the condition as it stands right now, especially to the south, could be seen as obtrusive and a significant impact. But I think the plans, the way they've been presented mitigate those concerns. You've actually stayed within your, the conditions in terms of building height and the FAR. And we're not going to try to revisit the conditions that this residential site have been given in exchange for all of the conditions that were granted by the property owner to the town and to the now Bardessono Inn. So, I would commend that you're staying within your legal limits, basically. You know, architectural style can always be challenged and questioned. And I agree with the ZDRB comments that it makes the most sense to match the inn. To try to create a completely separate freestanding element, I'm sure somebody would have a problem with that. It doesn't make sense to try to match any other existing neighborhood. The neighborhoods we have in town are distinct and they stand alone. And I think this is almost a neighborhood in and of itself because it is a very, it's a unique parcel, there's no question about it. But I think it makes the most sense to make it compatible with the adjacent inn. I would not add any kind of restrictions on the ability. The only restriction I agree with from staff is initially, I didn't think it was necessary to add in a condition about short-term rental or other non-typical residential use. But I don't think it would hurt to have that in if there is down the road a change of ownership of the property. But I certainly don't favor restricting one's ability to, for example, run a consulting business out of the house. We wouldn't put a restriction on any other property owner, and I certainly wouldn't do it just because you're right next to an inn. So, with those comments, I can support this project. I think it's going to, I believe that the inn design is a beautiful design. That's my personal opinion. I think this house will be a beautiful addition to that corner. There aren't that many people, I think, that have enjoyed that part of the pathway. As long as you're willing to, you know, have people walking right outside your property, I mean, that's kind of your decision. It is a tight fit, but as long as you're willing to do it, and I respect your reasons for wanting to be back on-site, not only to be in Yountville, but to be near a commercial venture as well as the affordable housing. I think all of the reasons you've stated are valid and good reasons. And as Councilmember Dutton said, I look forward to welcoming you officially back to the community when this is done. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, I read through the staff report and I looked at the design. And frankly, I mean, I think it's a spectacular design. And it's not too dissimilar as the original house, which was also a very flat, contemporary, low design, which I always admired on the property originally, and I was sorry to see it go to build the inn. But I think the design and the concept fits beautifully with the space, with the conditions that you've met through all the comments through the ZDRB. You've met those criteria. I'm sorry to see the glass blocks go because I think it's a really unique element, and I'd like to see them stay. But hey, you know, whatever makes you happy. I like the idea of the water feature, and I also like how you've blended into that corner and worked with all the elements, the landscaping and the water and just the flow of the design into the commercial complex. I really think it's a nice project. It really looks good. And as far as I'm concerned, all the conditions of approval are acceptable. And we'll be looking forward to seeing, or I know at least the ZDRB will be looking forward to seeing that final landscape and fencing plan. With those comments, I can support this project.
In that case, then I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2830-09, approving design review for the Bardessono Residence situated at the southeast corner of the Bardessono Complex located at the corner of Yount Street and Fennell Road.
And that's the amended, as amended?
As amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none that motion carries. Thank you. Can we have Councilmember Mueller rejoin us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to coming home.
Item 11, Town Art Walk Program and Community Arts Partnership. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you know, the council recently established a new Parks and Community Services Commission. One of the platforms of the council's policy was also to use this body to help develop policy recommendations and ideas related to arts and culture. And tonight, we're here to discuss some of the end product of some of those discussions and also with the work of the Arts Committee chaired by Judith Caldwell from our new commission. We've been working on primarily two initiatives and stumbled onto some really fortuitous good luck, and some things just happen that way. But as it's evolved, one of the ideas was, well, gee whiz, why don't we take advantage of Yountville's pedestrian scale? We already have some statues, outdoor art, some public art that has been put together in some of the private areas. But what if we went and did something a little nicer and created an amenity where we could display public outdoor art and link from the south Veterans Memorial Park to the north? Create another something to do while you're in Yountville. We have an artist community. So, we were working on that. And staff met with several artists to say, well, how would we go about doing this? Because this is a fairly unique program, but there's other models. And there was interest. So, we started developing it, and that led to some conversations with internationally renowned Napa Valley artist Gordon Huthur, who came up, really liked some of the ideas. And we were just trying to pick his brain on how would something like this work and what would we need to do to, you know, attract artists and, you know, start out in an embryonic stage? And he said, well, I'd be willing to loan you some pieces and get the program started. So, we kind of jump-started our program. So, what we're looking at is a public-private partnership, and it will grow over time. And the idea is to develop somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20-piece locations where public art can be located on both public property and a private. Staff spent a considerable amount of time working on how do we incorporate some of this into a public program and providing the coverage. And we're working through Parsac, and we're able to work on it. You see some of the samples there of the property owner participation agreements and also the artist participation agreements. So, anyway, we've moved forward. The Arts Committee has endorsed this. They realize they have some additional work because we will have to develop additional locations to add to the program and also solicit and attract the potential art. Gordon Huthur has, in the letters attached, offered to donate on loan four of his significant pieces, two which would go on public property associated with the community center and the adjoining Bardessono Pocket Park, and two that would go on private property, including Petite Logi and the Velagio. There's a lot more detail, and I'll let you ask questions. But we provided samples of all the administrative gunk work that I would call that go with the program, as well as the work that the Arts Committee has to do. The second program that we're here to talk about tonight is a very different approach. And that is what we're calling our Community Arts Partnership and affectionately known as the Gallery at the Community Center Program. The concept here is that we would outreach to Yountville artists and, depending on interest, Napa Valley, and that we would incorporate wall space in the community center complex for rotating art for sale or display from artists. And this would be a rotating basis, and the Arts Committee will help to screen, set up the program. And so, that's kind of a neat way to involve our community and the community center and for the town to support arts. I should point out, both programs have a commission component and that that would allow for sale of pieces, and the revenue would come back into what would be a new fund that we'll call the Town Arts Fund. And that will provide seed money for concert series, could be movie nights, other art venues, art shows, things like that that relate to that arts and cultural plank. I also point out that while these are new programs to Yountville, there are nuances of things that you will find in many communities adapted to fit kind of Yountville. More importantly, as we've been meeting with our Yountville Arts Committee, it also offers people in our community more opportunities to get involved and volunteer. There could be things such as helping to provide the narrative, helping at the receptions. It could provide more programming opportunity where the featured artists may end up doing a class, they may have a reception, or, you know, things like that at the community center. And we also think that it can be a neat augmentation and help to create the quality of life where you're really getting to experience something and exposed. And these are just two initiatives. The Arts Committee will be working on more. With that, there are a number of people that have been working with us. The Chair of the Arts Committee, Judith Caldwell, is here. There's a lot more detail in the program. Be happy to answer any questions that you all may have about our proposed programs for your consideration and acceptance of the public art loan donation.
Thank you for your report. Does council have any questions for staff at this time? Vice Mayor? Of course you do.
You know, I do. Just a couple, I'll try to be brief. Do we have any idea what our cost exposure is to setting up the bases or pads for the various locations?
That will vary. And initially, the cost to the town is nothing because we've already incorporated those in our existing, the two locations on public property are already, can support art. can support art. Future ones would depend. The program's designed that the private property owners would need actually to do that, that would be their contribution. The town would provide the insurance coverage, and that's why I say it will be a public-private partnership. We're really looking at, just to give you guys an order of magnitude, we're talking about generally a four-by-four to four-by-six pad. So we're not talking a, an overly large situation. There may be some cases where, depending on the piece that may be proposed by an artist, it could be smaller. But the idea going forward would be that we have some standard consistency, and in the future, when we did a call for artists, we would identify the spaces and the size. So going forward, as we raise some money, that may be something. But generally, you know, a four-by-four pad is not an overly expensive proposition, a couple thousand a pad, including potential lighting, depending on the availability of the conduit to lighting.
Okay, the other question I had, it came, it was discussed amongst the artists at the committee meeting last week, it was kind of interesting to hear the direction it went, it was about the commission. And reading through the report, we have different numbers, and...
Right, you're correct. Each program has a slightly different number. The outdoor Yountville Art Walk, because generally the scale and price of the pieces has a 15 percent commission, and the Community Arts Partnership has a 20 percent commission, which was the recommendation of those artists that felt that they would be participating in that particular program.
So then, there's one that got a little bit of both, on page two of the Voluntary Property Owner Participation Agreement. It says 15, I thought, then there was a 20 percent.
Those two forms...
Oh, I'm sorry, on, uh, the Voluntary Artist Participation Agreement, you've got the word 15, but then the number 20.
I'll correct that.
And so, I wasn't sure where that landed, because there was quite a bit of discussion about even a higher number to help validate the program. But this is the number that staff feels is most appropriate, 15, and then 20 for the other?
Correct, and that's based on input from the artists.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? Is there anyone from the Arts Council that would like to speak to the issue?
My name is Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street, your Arts Committee Chair. This is truly an exciting time for the arts in Yountville. In an email that I received today from Christina Young, Acting Director of the Arts Council, Christina wrote, "Yountville has surely and securely taken an exemplary leadership role with regards to the arts in Napa County. Congratulations. You have our complete support with your arts walk program and your community partnership collaboration. We sincerely hope that your resolution is adopted this evening. Several members of our Arts Committee are here this evening in support of this resolution. The Arts Committee is an absolutely amazing group of people. Never before did I dream that such a collection of brilliant, talented, common-sense folks would come together, ready to roll up their sleeves and do the necessary work for this town to artistically and creatively move forward. We are so blessed. There are no adjectives that any of us can use this evening that would allow our positive commitment to be brought forward to you. Our work, we can assure you, will always be for the highest good. Our meetings have been light, and fun, and energy-filled. In this brief town, we already have subcommittees. We have a jury, ready and willing to go to take a look at any art brought to town. We have a committee, ready and willing, to do the food and wine arenas for any art event. We had a commitment from Richard Eldag, a committee member today, who is the Director of the Lincoln Theater, and also the Napa Valley Symphony, to commit to giving us a trio for the grand opening of our community center. So no matter what the question or request is, it seems like this committee is full of people ready to say yes to you. In a report presented to the Napa County Commission meeting last night for the arts and culture, Olivia Everett of Wandering Rose reminded each of us commissioners that the development's sustainability and vibrancy of a public arts and culture movement is absolutely invaluable to a community's positive growth. Ms. Everett's opinion is that the ability for individuals to create and experience a diversity of voices through local arts and culture is imperative to the unification and health of a community, as well as positively impacting the impression of the community people who live here, as well as to its visitors. Life can beat down on us. It can crush our soul, and art can remind us that we still have one. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Rob Anglin, 1891 Marlborough Street. I am so excited about this project. I think the fact that Steve and Judith have stepped up as a private part, a public-private partnership, to bring something that, that I personally love, and I think a lot of us do love, art in our lives. And all you have to do is look at open studios to see what an interest there is in the valley, just of our local artists. When people come to town, they, they, I think, would like to have another experience beyond a wine tasting experience, going out to the wineries, or even go to the tasting rooms in town. To add another dimension to what we can offer here in Yountville with an art experience is fabulous. And I think with the, the first meeting that we had, the ideas that were thrown out were incredible. I think that, that, starting with, with the, um, the art walk and the, the art that's going to be displayed in the opening of the community center is only one part of it. From that point, I think it's going to expand into many, many different ideas. And I, and, and there are ideas that, that bring the merchants and the artists into, to, um, uh, working together. So I think there's many, many things that not only can we make Yountville a town that's a destination not only for wine, but for art, too, but to bring the artists that are local, and we have many of them in town, together to know each other, to meet each other, to, to brainstorm ideas on how we can all work together for the town. As someone who walks the town quite a bit, every time I walk a different path, I keep thinking, well, how can this fit into an art walk? And there are many, many different ways to bring people through our neighborhoods to get them to know who we are as a, as a town. And so I'm excited that, that there's, there's a willingness from the town publicly, and, and certainly a willingness from the private sector to, to really make this happen. So I urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hello, Rob Wennerberg, 58 Bergen, D.O.A. And I'm way too tall for this, okay. As a local artist here, and I've been going to the meetings, too, I'm here because Steve told me to be here. No, but, but really, I think it's a great opportunity. Actually, when I moved here about a year ago, I thought it was a kind of a void that was missing. I come to find out there was a lot of art I just didn't know about that is around, especially when it comes to sculptures. So just here to support that, I think it's a great idea. There's a lot of artists around that really want to help out, get involved. I think these are just the first steps of a lot that we can do, especially as an arts council. So I urge you to adopt this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments in this program? One more comment?
Yeah, I forgot. I forgot to let you know that this packet is filled with applications from artists who live in Yountville, who attended that Arts Committee meeting, took the draft, already filled it out, and delivered it to my house personally. Also, there isn't an art or architecture magazine that you can read today that doesn't talk about art walks.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Any...
I'm not going to say anything after this, even if you want me to. I was asked to get, be the keynote speaker at the Concierge Alliance of Napa Valley. About 300 people attended. These were concierge from San Francisco, Sonoma, and Napa, asking, what can we do artistically? Where is the art in Yountville? Where is the art in Napa County? Okay? That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion and/or decision. Councilmember Mueller? Um, I, I like both of these programs. I think the, the part that I'm struggling with is, are the numbers in here. We're going, you know, 15 to 20 pads, maybe more than 20, and I, I, and then on, in the community hall, I haven't really walked it, I'm not as familiar as, you know, John might be and some other people, so I can't get a sense, is this every wall, or every third wall? So that's my problem, is, you know, how much space are we filling up, and how is the rest of the community, you know, going to feel about, you know, more than 20 spots? I have no problem with either one of the programs. I mean, one of the things that moves me the most is going out to some of our parks and just looking at the hills and the vineyards. I mean, to me, that's kind of living art that I truly enjoy. So I, I think it's great, and I think we need both of these, but I just don't have a way of assessing the numbers in here, really, at this time. I mean, are we going to have, you know, if there's more than 20, is there, you know, every corner going to have a statue on it or something? I don't know.
Let me try to address two things, and I'll start with each program separately. There's been a preliminary identification of 18 to 20 sites, and no, that's not an extreme proliferation, and as we develop, we'll put more forward, a, a more definitive map. But given the distance, and I'm talking here for the art walk, it can easily support 20, 20 sites without looking like you're right on top of each other.
Do you have a map of those sites?
Well, we've got a tentative, and that's something the Arts Committee is working on, because some of that is still dependent on the private partner, private property participation. So that's why I say these, these things will be going forward, and as we discuss that. But certainly, that's something that the Arts Committee can bring back, and we can give reports on the, the long-term approach. But, you know, in consideration, for example, you could look at, Veterans Memorial Park could easily accommodate two to three pieces, and just use that as a benchmark. You've got a couple of spots along the Velagio, the marketplace on both sides of the street that should go up Washington. So from north to south, that's not really an excessive amount. With regard to the other program, inside the packet, we've actually, initially, staff has actually identified 10 spaces right now, so it's, the Community Arts Partnership at the community center has approximately 10 spaces, and we may expand that, but we want to get a little feel for the utilization and not over-inundate that. So we've taken that concern, I think, a little bit into practice. And, and both of these are, the footnote that I would say is, we're going to continually evaluate and review them and make sure. So they will come back for periodic updates and reports to the council.
So that was, um, so right now, you're, but that, that was where I was confused in the report. It says that the town manager will select a potential of 10 to 20 sites, and those sites may be phased in over time, which, I mean, do you have any idea, are we, what are we talking about there? I would really like for the community embrace this and get used to it, not just, you know...
Well, I think, in answer to that question...
That's what I'm struggling with, how do we really...
Well, there's two elements. One, we don't have funding to go out and build the additional public pads, so part of the challenge of the Arts Committee is to help develop the fundraising support to grow the program beyond what we're initially doing, and to put their program budget together. So that's going to, I think, dictate a little bit of the pace of where that growth for the art walk, and also the private property ownership interest. So I think we're, we've got several years before we would be anywhere near 15 to 20, and we'd be able to get some sensing of, is that too much, not enough? And also, I, you know, we're incorporating publicly in some of the print media and guides, some of the existing art that already exists in town, so that people will know how to go look at that. That's part of the challenge in there for the Arts Committee. But I mean, one of their initial things is, there is a rough map that's been mapped out, but we really want the community to sit down, the committee, and working with the community, and see how that is, see what, what property owners are interested, and also, when we go through, you know, the placement in a public area cannot negatively impact the existing use of that public property. That's also a consideration of the town and the staff. So I'm, I'm fairly comfortable that we're going to go in an incremental phase, and, you know, unless somebody drops $20,000 on us tomorrow to, to fund all the pads, we're going to go incrementally and, and, you know, work through the committee and give you guys progress reports on where we're going and who's interested.
So we would have to go back through a new budget cycle, or wait till the budget cycle occurs, before we build any pads? Is that what we're saying?
No, I'm, you're saying two things. If the public came forward on, and donated money to the program, then that would be one opportunity for us to add on the public. The private property owners that want to participate, it's their responsibility to produce the pad. So those could go at a different pace. But as this year's budget did not include more money for that, that's why I'm saying this is sort of an embryonic, and that gives them a, you know, we get a jumpstart, so we can actually get something started, get people going, and then next year, the Arts Committee will be responsible for, for developing a, a budget outline, and then we'll see how the budget supports that, and what their fundraising efforts are.
Any more questions or comments?
Not right now.
Okay. Councilmember Dutton, any comments?
Yeah, I do, and thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I was just thinking, and I don't know exactly how many years ago it was, but I'm sure all of you remember, most of you, Diane Brinker, who basically brought this same idea forward probably too early, in a sense. And now, obviously, we're talking about it. I do want to commend, though, the Arts Committee for obviously, sort of putting their pedal to the metal, so to speak. I mean, they've gotten an awful lot done here, and I think it is, a lot of things have fallen into place, I think, within the town. But as I look at this, and believe me, I am the least artistic person in the world, so I'm only making comments as far as what I, I can see. But the, the fact that, again, when you look at the program, at programs that are designed and the, and what can happen, I think, once again, with the beneficiary, having a town the size that we have, it can be very effective, you know, in the sense that, you know, it's easily walkable, it's, you can just do it very easily and not be strung out all over. It's, it's not too much and too little an area. So I have confidence that whatever number comes about, it will be done in a, in a manner that will certainly make it acceptable to most people. I'm sure there's going to be some dissenters, but that happens with everything. It appears that in the, overall, this is fairly low-cost type of thing that we can do, and, and obviously, could generate some revenue, and a small, or very low cost to get into, so, and getting both the public and the private involved in it. So I fully support it. I think it's a great thing, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it develops.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and, and I wholeheartedly support this as well. Having seen firsthand Chairperson Caldwell's style, it's not a surprise, Councilmember Dutton's comments about how quickly they're moving, as soon as anyone opened their mouth, they were a new subcommittee chairperson, and they were tasked with some effort, so... But what I was really impressed with, because the first meeting we had earlier in the afternoon, it was not as well-attended, but still, we got some good ideas out of that initial group. This meeting last week, there were a variety of artists, a variety of, of, you know, styles, photography, sculpture, painting. One artist works with clothing, so it's a real diverse group already, and they brought kind of a common sense for what the potential is here. They were actually almost pushing for more than this. They even wanted more commission, thinking, you know, not only would it add some validity to the, the program, but it would also help jumpstart the, the money in the bank to, to do more things. But there was great energy, and a lot of good comments coming from the artists, and that was one of the comments that I made to them, which is, you know, we as a town or the council can try to pretend that we know what's going to work and how to best affect... affect this. But having the local artists step up and take the reins is going to be, I think, part of the success and it's really key to making this work. And I think to Councilmember Dutton's comment, whether it was too early a few years ago with Diane Brinker or, you know, the climate is right, I mean, we talk about retail diversity in town. That came up about the ability to have businesses collaborate with this effort to give another reason for people to come into their businesses. So, I think there are great opportunities in town and also to partner with the county on this and kind of broaden the horizons a little bit. But I was excited how quickly we were able to get somebody of the stature of Gordon Huether on board and how quickly our local artists stepped up and said they want to participate and not just, you know, show my work. It's do the grunt work and get out and get people, other people involved. So, I think that's the key to the success of this and I'm looking forward to welcoming art as another element to kind of the food and wine experience that people enjoy already here in Yountville.
Good. Thank you for your comments. Before I make my comments, I just wanted to let everyone know that we did get a letter from Zoe Harris, regretfully unable to attend the meeting this evening, but she is in support of the program as well. This, we've been discussing an Art Walk, not necessarily an Art Walk, but arts, bringing arts to the community for a long, long time. And I think it's a perfect opportunity for us to move forward with this program at this time. The donation of the sculptures are just, they're just breathtaking. They're beautiful sculptures. The artist likes primary colors and I'm just thinking, you know, these reds and blues and yellows, they'll be so beautiful against a gray sky. So, they'll just bring so much warmth and vitality to the community during the slower winter months and really incentivize people to get out and walk around and take a look at these beautiful pieces. I share some of the concerns of Councilmember Mueller. I want to proceed cautiously. We don't want to, we don't want to mess up a good thing. We want to take it slow, really evaluate the pieces, really just, you know, make, find the best position for these pieces in the town so that everyone can enjoy them. And so, I would, I can support the programs as they're written and I can't even imagine we could, you would even notice twenty sites in this town. But, you know, these pieces, these pieces that are being donated by Mr. Huether, you'll definitely notice, they're beautiful and they will be prominent, prominently displayed. I wish I could be a part of it. My only, probably my only concern was giving the town manager discretion to decide which pieces would make the cut, but I know he has the ability to designate that, so.
We have a jury.
Yeah, the jury, right. So, that'll be exciting. I think it's a wonderful program. I'm really excited about it and ready to get it implemented and can't wait to see those first pieces in place.
I'll move for adoption of Resolution 2831-09, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Yountville, State of California, adopting the Yountville Art Walk Program, Goals, Policies and Guidelines, Acceptance of Loan of Art Pieces from Sculpturer Gordon Huether to Launch the Program and Establishing a Community Arts Partnership Program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post? None? That motion carries. Thank you. Do you, council want a break or keep going?
No.
We're almost done?
Let's go.
Okay. Thank you. That's a great program. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 12, Council Protocols Update. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The item presented before you this evening is the first update review of the Town Council Protocols, originally updated by council in April of 2006. The protocols was established after a study session conducted by the Town Council. The protocols are meant to be a framework for council and staff to provide effective leadership. Some of the main sections of the protocols include various statutory requirements, council organization, code of ethics, a new section for quasi-judicial proceedings, council administration slash professional development, a re-section, Board Commission and Committee, some new information's been added and the sections have been consolidated into one area, an area for meeting guidelines and procedures, new subsection regarding budget workshop and policy discussions. And then, we also have a main section of communications and a new section televising, videotaping and web streaming. And then, it talks about the council-staff and attorney relationship. And then, there's a new section for protocol administration. More specifically, this has come from the result of council making comments over the years in regard to protocols and then staff working with the document and using it. And it's been a really good document as it was originally adopted. And there's just a few items that we've added for council's consideration this evening. More specifically, they include Section 2 under statutory requirements. We've added a new subsection 2.3 to address AB 1234 Ethics Training, which is something we currently do, but by adding this section, it just formalizes it within the protocols. There's also, under Section 3, Council Organization, we've added a new subsection 3.1 regarding candidate orientation. And there's also a newly-elected council member orientation. That's something that the town manager has historically conducted and we just thought we would add it to formalize it. There's also a new Section 5 proposed for quasi-judicial proceedings, in particular related to ex parte communications. And we've extracted that information from some protocols responded to from other jurisdictions. And the town attorney's here to speak more to that if there's specific questions. As I mentioned earlier, we have new areas in the Board Commission and Committee section related to standing committee, council standing committees, ad hoc committees and appointments to local and regional boards. There was also an item raised by Councilmember Chilton that we wanted to address regarding notice of vacancies and potentially automatically extending the recruitment a period when we receive the exact number of applications for positions being recruited for. So, that's something council may want to consider. In addition, there is meeting guidelines and procedures, that's Section 8. It's a new subsection for policy slash decision-making process. And that was something simply to give a framework when council has budget priority-setting sessions or study sessions, maybe the toolbag discussion items. And then, under Section 9, there's a new subsection 9.1, as I mentioned earlier, just addresses our televising and web streaming of council meetings. And then, I've added a new Section 11, which is simply protocol administration and how that will take place. It's going to be done typically on an as-needed basis. And like I said, this is the first revision. These are just suggested changes for council to consider. It's up to council if they would like to accept the items as presented or possibly make revisions or leave the protocols as they currently exist. I did get comments from council member regarding Sections 8.3, particularly just clarifying the nuance between public comment and public hearing. The town attorney can address that. And procedural motions under 8.5.6. And then, potentially Section 8.2.2 regarding agenda packet preparation, which we currently have in the protocols, that the packet is prepared and distributed by Friday at 3:00. However, more recently, we have been getting that packet out by the end of the day Thursday and more often earlier than that. But we wanted to leave the Friday in for those heavy packet days when we need more time to get that information out. That concludes my presentation. I'll just be asking for direction on any items you would like me to proceed with or any additional items you would like me to research. And once we have a decision on that, I'll come back with a resolution for formal adoption.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough and comprehensive report and look at these, the existing protocols and the changes you made. Does council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think I'll start with the, I have two. As Michelle mentioned, on Section 8.5.6 for procedural motions, it says that in Section 210, we do follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order. But when I look at those, the Section 8.5.6 specifically says that the following motions are allowed and no others. But Rosenberg's has others. So, that's my first question. It seems like those two things are in conflict. Is that your opinion, Amy or Michelle, whoever wants to speak to that first question?
It is thought that we could, under 8.5.6, under, on page 26, it was suggested by Councilmember Mueller to remove the words "and no other" from that section. And then, I would also suggest adding a sentence that council or people refer to Rosenberg's Rules of Order for additional procedural items. I don't think, together with both of those items, that they will address every possible procedural item that the council could encounter. These are meant for guidelines to conduct the meeting. If the town attorney would like to add to that, that would be great.
Well, when Michelle, and I talked about this earlier in relation to a question about specific procedural motions that are not addressed in the protocols that are in Rosenberg's rules, there really aren't, there are some that are, that have, I've never seen used here regarding motions to limit debate, motions to close nominations related to choosing officers. So, procedurally, I think this list is fairly comprehensive. That is, in the protocols, I don't think there's a problem. On the other hand, with removing "and no others" if for some reason, there's something that's in Rosenberg's that's appropriate, that would help facilitate the conduct of the meeting. I mean, Rosenberg's, this is it. It's four pages. It's meant to simplify parliamentary procedure as much as possible while still allowing you to maintain order and to interact with each other by following some simple rules of procedure. So, I don't have a problem with taking out "and no others," although I don't know what those others would be under Rosenberg's.
One example I'd have would, a substitute motion. I know we've used that when we were doing some things. So, that would be one example I would have. It just seems like, my only conflict was, do we follow Rosenberg's as in Section 210 or do we follow procedurals as in 8.5.6? So, if we take those words out, that seems to take care of everything.
A substitute motion really isn't a procedural motion. It's, you're making, it is a procedure to make a substantive motion rather than a procedural motion. And so, substitute motions are always in order. I think there may have, there has not been an opportunity for clarity necessarily about how substitute motions work. And Rosenberg's rules address substitute motions and motions to amend that are pretty handy and explain how those operate. I have found that here and in other jurisdictions, people adopt a practice that may come from a policy or not come from a policy, but once it's the practice, then it becomes a policy. And so, there are, you'll find things in Rosenberg's, for example, that state that a second isn't needed for the chair of the board to call a vote. Well, here, we always wait until there is a second. And so, I know, if I recall correctly, there was once a debate about whether a substitute motion was appropriate before a second to a motion already on the floor was being considered. Well, if you follow Rosenberg's rules, a second isn't necessary. A substitute motion could be interjected at any time. And you generally call for a vote on the last motion on the floor. So, the substitute motion would be voted on and you could call for that vote whether that substitute motion was seconded or not. So, it's just, all of this, the protocols and Rosenberg's rules are all just meant to allow you to get your business conducted in some reasonable fashion, whether there's some hard and fast rule that you would want to follow, that there must always be a second, for example. You know, you could write that into the protocols if you wanted to, but I think that taking "no others" out of this, if we're going to leave all of these procedural motions in the protocols, is fine. But then, I also think it's important that the centrality of Rosenberg's into how this council operates be emphasized by including it as an attachment to the protocol so it's there for easy reference. And they are very clean and simple rules, especially compared to something like Robert's Rules of Order, so.
Any more questions?
Yes, I'd like some clarification. I was, well, I think the best way to focus this is, because there's a lot of different pieces that all centers around public comment and public hearing and when we're using that definition. So, probably the easiest way to focus it is looking at Section 8.3.6. Am I got that right, Michelle? Nope.
You have, there's a couple.
8.4.8.
And then, there's another 8.5.13.
Right. Is it 13 the one where we have the whole process?
Procedure.
There's, where it talks about opening and closing public comment after.
8.3.3 is the public comment paragraph, is it?
Right. And that talks about what public comment is. And then, when we have a, here it is, 8.3.6, yeah. So, the first question, which will probably lead to a longer discussion, but maybe not, is when we have a public hearing, I'm assuming that that's a procedural entire event for an agenda item. And within a public hearing, we certainly open public comment. Now, it says in Item C that the mayor opens the public hearing after the staff report. To me, this seems like it should be the mayor's opening public comment within a public hearing because it seems like the staff report's part of the public hearing. And so, that's where I was confused. And if you kind of go through, there's many places where it seems slightly interchangeable here. And having a distinct definition like in 8.2.3 on public comment seems to make sense to me, but.
I'd just like to point out that for 8.3, the heading agenda items is following the items as they're listed on the agenda and considered by the council. So, the call to order, adoption of agenda, public comment and approval of consent calendar. In that context, the public comment that is referred to in 8.3.3 is the general public comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Right.
And that's always called public comment.
Right.
For public hearings, which can be, and another point I want to make clear is that you can have public hearings that are either legislative in character or quasi-judicial. So, not every public hearing is quasi-judicial, which requires a little more formality in how it's carried out. And it does include that portion where the public is given the opportunity to give what is essentially testimony, that we don't, we don't call it testimony because we're not, it's not that formal, but it also is not general public comment that's given on items that are, on matters that are not on the agenda. And it is true that everything that happens when that agenda item is called, that is the public hearing, everything presented is part of the record of that hearing.
Right.
The staff report, the questions of the council of the staff before. The staff report, the questions of the council, of the staff, before the public is given the opportunity to present its testimony to, to the, to the council. I noticed, I printed some stuff up from the league and, you know, it is, I, I think that the, the reason that it's in the council protocols the way it is, is because that's sort of how it's laid out in a lot of information that's provided by the Institute for Local Governments. And it's specific in this document that I've printed out that is, this is about how to, getting the most out of public hearings and improving public involvement. And they specifically list that a typical hearing will involve a report to the council, questions of the staff by the council, opening of the public hearing, statement by the project proponent, statements by other members of the public, rebuttals and closing statements, and the decision. And that's generally how you, how this body has carried out, in particular, land use applications. Now, when they say a typical hearing will involve, that doesn't necessarily mean that the order in which things have been done and placing the opening of the public hearing at some portion in the middle of that has any significance that would eliminate the concept that the entire proceeding is a public hearing, even though there's a portion at which you're offering the public an opportunity to give its testimony and it's procedurally called opening the public hearing. So I don't see a problem with changing that in the protocols to say, to make it reflect more accurately that the, the agenda item is called and it's considered by the council in a public hearing, which includes all of these different things. Taking the staff report, asking staff questions.
I'd be totally fine with that, so that it's clear that we could be having, the mayor will open a public hearing and she can close the public hearing, but the whole procedure is a public hearing, whether it be legislative or quasi-judicial. So adding that clarification, I think, would be helpful. And I'm fine with that. So those are like the only two things, the clarification of, we want to figure out what motion to make, do we flip to Robert's rules or do we go to this page? And I think we, by taking out a few words, that helps. And I think adding that clarification, Amy just mentioned that we can technically open a public hearing, within a public hearing.
Right.
I think that's clear.
If I may, following the clarification that you all were just discussing, if you'd follow down to item 8.3.7 where we say regular items, I would also suggest that we add a sentence that references the fact that public comment on this item will be sought so that we'll get the nuance, but that way we have consistency so that the public that shows up for that item knows that they're going to have an opportunity to present their comment. I know we're starting to be a little bit redundant, but I think that way whoever is reading that knows that they'll have an opportunity to speak and provide information on that item to the council. So just staff will work with in adding a sentence that, that way you'll have your items very clear that the public is welcome to provide you with their input.
And on 8.3.6, that is entitled to public hearings and has a procedure that really is essentially for quasi-judicial proceedings. We may, it may be worth it to go through this and make it a little more general, because there are public hearings that are required to be noticed as public hearings, for example, for consideration of things like the general plan, but that are not quasi-judicial.
Right.
They are legislative acts, so you have a lot more latitude and you don't have to have the same semi-formal setting and, and make necessarily the same kind of record that you do in a quasi-judicial proceeding.
Well, so what would be different? What would we do differently, except for the noticing, for a legislative public hearing versus a quasi-judicial public hearing?
Well, for example, in the public hearing section 8.3.6, where you have it listed, the steps that will be followed, following the opening of the public hearing, it says the applicant presents their request or proposal. Well, you're not going to have, when you're considering, for example, a zoning ordinance, a zoning ordinance may have been initiated by a request of an applicant, but in many, and probably here, most cases, it's going to come from the staff. So you're not going to have an applicant. You're going to have staff present the proposed ordinance. You're still going to take public testimony or comment on that before you make a decision. And you will have findings provided by the staff and maybe those findings may be, they could be inconsistent with what you hear from the public when they show up. You may direct staff to go back and change something about the ordinance based on that, but it's still a public hearing. But it doesn't require that you, you know, give any applicant in particular an opportunity to present their case or present rebuttals.
So it's really just changing or putting a slash, slash applicant slash staff or staff slash applicant, and then this whole section would cover both legislative and quasi-judicial?
Right, but there are some things, there are other distinctions that, for example, with quasi-judicial proceedings related to due process, that you don't necessarily have in the legislative setting, because in the legislative setting, for example, you're able to-
Non-judge and jury.
Right. You, what you are, you are the-
We're making policy.
You're making policy, you're making the final decision, and you're able to make that decision based on whatever information you choose. And that could include information that you've received outside of the public hearing.
Right.
You're not limited to considering evidence that's presented, that everyone has a chance to see and review and, and possibly rebut. So in that sense, it, the distinction is that no one is going to be expecting that the record of your decision on a legislative matter is necessarily going to reflect everything that went into making that decision.
Well, I'd be happy in having two sections on public hearings and defining each one. I, I think that would be helpful, if that's not a lot of work, Michelle, to find those out.
I think that the, the Institute for Local Government provides a lot of information that-
Right.
-could be easily incorporated to make it more understandable for people who refer to the protocols. However, I would qualify that by saying, both for the protocols and anything you get from the league, none of it is an authority that supersedes what it says you're supposed to do in the government code or in the planning law or anywhere there's a state or federal statute that says this is how you have to do it. And that's the important thing to remember, that no matter what outline you get here, that's all it is, is an outline. And there may be some statutory authority that requires that you do it a specific way that isn't necessarily laid out in these protocols.
That's why we have a town attorney.
I would also say, based on what Amy is saying, we might want to put that little caveat in here so that-
Right. And I, I think it's in here in a couple places, but probably not as prominently as it should be.
I just think that's a good point in that particular public hearing, because we've run into some of that, for example, on some of the public financing mechanisms, where there's a very structured format and it doesn't necessarily follow this, although it's 95%. So I think clarifying that and stressing that would be helpful.
But on the other hand, you can't go through all of the code, federal and state, that might require you carry out something according to some procedure and incorporate that in these documents.
Especially if Caltrans is involved.
Agreed.
Sorry, that was an editorial comment, I'll take that back.
Strike that from the record. Any more questions? Councilmember Dutton, any questions on the proposed protocols?
I would only have one comment, I think, and you mentioned, Michelle, about the, on boards and commissions. There, I think you said that Councilmember Chilton said that if we didn't have more than the, or if we had exactly the same, we should leave it open. I, I don't think we should. I mean, I think we should leave it as it is, no more than, you know, if we had two council seats open and only two people wanted them, we certainly wouldn't extend the deadlines, you know, so more people could get in. So I would just leave it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions or comments on the existing proposed changes?
I would agree with Councilmember Dutton's comment that was just made. We're not obligated to vote that same number of people onto a board or commission. It's still discretionary for the council, so I don't feel compelled to extend the deadline, but we may, just by definition of not voting for all of the vacant seats, extend the deadline. Just a couple very technical things. I think this is a very good piece to include the candidate orientation. You reference in the front of the report that it's section 3.1, but then back in the draft, it's 3.3.
Okay.
So whichever one, certainly doesn't matter to me, but just that we marry those two up.
Thank you.
Then this, this must be a typo on page 12 where it says council salaries are $405, and that was adopted in October of 2004. I'm sure that's missing some numbers somewhere. No, I'm just kidding.
No.
Wishful thinking.
Yes.
I think this is extremely thorough already, and I don't, I don't feel the need to, oh, there's one, one topic I just wanted to throw out was emergency sessions. And do we need any explanation on, on clarification how to, how an emergency session could be called? I don't know that it is, did I miss it in here? What, in terms of notice period or anything like that?
They really are governed by the Brown Act specifically. I mean, they, we, we can incorporate something in here, but they can't be held except consistent with the Brown Act. And so they can be called at any time, I think almost with no notice or notice to the press, but only for very specific kinds of emergencies.
I see, it is referenced, as the mayor just pointed to me, on page 17, 8.1.2. As you just stated, the Brown Act sets forth the requirements for special and emergency meetings. Okay, I didn't, I just missed that line initially. Okay, thank you.
And that's sort of one of those examples that I pointed out. We can give a general guideline, but there are some very specific rules, regulations, laws, et cetera, that-
It's also identified in section 2.1, the emergency meeting too.
Good, thank you. Anyone from the public want to comment on our protocol update? Okay, seeing none. Michelle, you have sufficient direction.
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get consensus on the Councilmember Chilton's request to-
Boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would-
I only heard comment from-
I would agree with, I would agree with Councilmember Dutton, Dutton's comments.
Thank you for that.
Okay, item 13. Are we there already? Staff informational reports, community center project.
Now, this will be a learning lesson following your discussion on protocols. The intent behind informational items is to provide you and the public with information, but not necessarily for us to go into an in-depth presentation and description. So with that, the intent behind that is if the council has a question or you want to have something, we'll try to use that. Here, we have a little more time tonight, but typically, for example, we've been providing a monthly status report on the community center project, budget information here. We're also doing that with our wastewater treatment plant project. And a new one in this particular case, the staff has put together a very detailed outline of the emergency heritage tree removal and all the reported documents. So following your protocol discussion, if you, we have, we're here to answer any questions you might have on those three items.
Good, thank you. Council, have any questions for staff on this item? Any comments, questions, clarifications?
I can think of a question.
You've got to be kidding. Anyone from the public want to comment on the community center library project status report? All right. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade status report? Seth?
I've covered all three of the informational items, unless you have questions about the written material and the documentation.
Okay, heritage tree removal, emergency request, and other reports and comments. Are there any other reports or comments? It's getting interesting. Any, anything else?
We actually do have a few things, and I'm going to let Bob share a very exciting piece of news, especially from the planning.
All right. We received notification from HCD that our housing element's been certified by the state.
Very cool.
That's good news.
Great.
Good for us. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay, council meeting, council member, meeting reports and comments. Flood control, flood control did not meet. We had a special meeting of the city selection committee that apparently we did not have a quorum. There was a mix-up in dates and times, and so that meeting was canceled. It's scheduled for, along with the flood control meeting, for November 10th. And I think, I think that's all I have. NEPA County Transportation Planning Agency, since Councilmember Chilton is not here, we did meet. What did we do? Well, we went over some budget items and, of course, as usual, we get our usual Caltrans update and we talked about the agricultural workers' van pool, which is a really exciting new program that's coming to the valley, and we're getting funding for that, climate protection plan. We talked about the Yountville trolley, we talked about updates to the website, all kinds of minor administrative things, and there wasn't really nothing, really anything very significant.
But you found $2 million, is that the saying?
In grants, unfunded grants that were out there, yeah. The guys did, the, the new accounting team did a fantastic job in going out there and getting those grant monies and securing them before we lost them. So it was, you know, in the transition with management to the NCTPA, there were kind of things were slipping through the cracks and they were brought to our attention by the financial auditors. And we did manage to secure that grant funding. And of course, we talked about, Caltrans talked about their progress on the roundabouts, and they are going to start working on the Rutherford Roundabout, which has been a much anticipated project in the valley. I lost my place. Wick?
Wick did not meet last Thursday.
Anybody have anything else? Any other council reports or comments? Okay, future agenda items.
Wait, I would make one comment, Mayor, if I could.
Sure.
Next Wednesday, the 11th, is Veterans Day.
Oh, yeah.
And they will be having the luncheon for the veterans put on by the town and the various businesses and what have you. So I don't know where the volunteer status stands, but for those of you who can do that, it's, it's quite a nice experience to be able to help out during that luncheon time and, and certainly something that the vets look forward to. And so that, I believe, I don't know much more than that about, do you just show up at 10 o'clock or, so, 9:30? I forget exactly.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Dutton. The, the Yountville Chamber has been coordinating this effort for the past five years. This is the fifth annual celebrity chefs, we call it, Veterans Day Luncheon, and we do have a, quite a slate of chefs and a spectacular menu that will be prepared and served by an all-volunteer team. Currently, I think we're at about 35 to 40 volunteers. We typically need anywhere from 60 to 70 volunteers. So, yeah, if anyone's out there listening, we will have a volunteer orientation meeting at 3:00 on Monday up at the main dining room. And Monday, the 9th? And then, of course, anyone interested in helping out and serving, dark slacks, white shirt, you've got to wear a hairnet, even if you're Eric Housley. And we'll need your help from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then afterwards, we all, all the volunteers get to enjoy the same meal. So that meal is served to the veterans in the dining room as opposed to their going through a cafeteria line for their usual meal service. So it, it's, it is a very nice event. Thank you for bringing that up. So anyone interested in volunteering, contact the Chamber of Commerce at 944-0904. Thanks.
Mayor, if I may just, one comment I wanted to make, I don't think, were the Michelin star ratings released since our last meeting?
They have been released.
But I mean, I just wanted to acknowledge some of our businesses in town. It's really amazing the success that we have- It's really amazing the success that we have, at such an elite level, and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yountville has retained its six Michelin stars, with the French Laundry getting three stars, that's the highest ranking you can get. Red, Bouchon, and a Twal, while not directly within city limits, we consider them definitely a part of Yountville. So we got three other restaurants with one star piece, which is a very, very commendable achievement. Thank you for bringing that up. Any more comments, council? Item 15, future agenda items, Yountville End Master Development Plan will come back to us on the, what is that, 17th? Vineyard Oaks Night Development Agreement and Pacific Blues Design Review. Looking forward to seeing all those projects come back. Item 16, closed session, is there a need for a closed session? All right, no closed session. Item 17, can I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, that motion carries. Thank you, we'll see you on November 17th.